Monday, April 17th, 2023, meeting of the 39th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Dooley?
Here.
Mayor Protem Gavin?
Here.
Councilmember Hunnen?
Here.
Councilmember Patterson?
Here.
Councilmember Vilani?
Here.
Mayor Dean?
Here. Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin with support from Councilmember Patterson. Are there any changes or additions? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Dooley?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hunnen?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The agenda has been approved. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've now come to the portion of the meeting where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. Please direct your comments to the chair. Please refrain from cheering, booing, clapping, or speaking out of turn. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided on the table in the hallway just outside this door. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. You have three minutes to speak, and there are timers located on either side of the room that will let you know when your three minutes is coming to an end.
Good evening, Wendy Zabramski, 3340 Gardner in Berkeley. Good evening, council members. This is regarding the parking study in Amiches. It came to my attention today that Kristen is allowing Amiches to keep their expanded seating, outdoor seating area, which was granted because of the COVID times. My understanding is that they were all to end at the end of this month. However, I was told that Kristen approved Amiches that is able to keep theirs because they do not need the two parking spaces it takes up because they are within 500 feet of municipal parking. While there are nine municipal parking spaces and one handicap space on that side of Gardner, certainly are not enough for Amiches. Certainly not enough for the Amiches they has for their indoor, let alone their outdoor seating area, their old seating area. So I don't understand how they are allowed to expand even further. Also, many cars on the east side of Gardner in the municipal parking spaces take those parking spaces and walk across, taking from the businesses there, between Gardner and Griffith, and of course, the cars that park on the residential streets. Then there are the businesses with deeded parking spaces who fight to keep their parking spaces for their customers. Now comes a concern you all need to consider seriously. These past several days, there have been very warm days. And with that, there have been a lot of waiting in line in the parking lot for people to vacate and get their turn in Amiches. Cars have been having trouble backing out of parking spaces because people are standing in the way. They are in the way of the alley. They can't get through, people are in the way, someone's going to get hurt. I realize the law says that as long as there is municipal parking within 500 feet, they do not need to have their own parking, they can have municipal parking. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
But certainly that municipal parking must be sufficient to accommodate that said business and parking, and patron parking.
If I may finish, I have a paragraph quick.
We were promised that the parking study was to be done.
Three minutes, sorry, but thank you.
Okay, I just want to know that, want you to know that Amiches is the biggest offender of the downtown parking.
Thank you, Ms. Zabramski.
Hello, my name is Joseph Fisher, and I live in Royal Oak. Does this thing come off, or, okay, I'm better at it this way. I live in Royal Oak, about two months ago, I was stopped by a Berkeley police officer while driving for Uber after turning onto a side street where he was parked on the side street monitoring traffic. Noticing him, I made, or at least certainly attempted to, make a full stop before turning. Moments later, he immediately turned around and pulled me over. My passengers were confused, saying that I had stopped. I believed I had stopped. When I asked for the reason for the stop, he said that I didn't stop and that it was a rolling stop. The citation was "Failure to obey stop sign", which I find humorous because there's a reason we call it attempted murder and not failure to kill. The officer seemed very perturbed when I went to get the phone numbers of my passengers to use as witnesses at a formal hearing where I to request one. I requested informal hearing and pleaded responsible with explanation, fearing that anything less than contrition would be met with backlash. I received the opportunity to complete a driver improvement course, which takes four hours to complete, but doesn't really take four hours to finish. Imagine finishing the SAT but having to stay there until the last person finishes. This forces us to ask, is the purpose to provide real driving remediation or simply punish? Well, that's a state legislative issue and far outside of your control. And yes, this officer was doing his job, but I thought he was doing it rather lazily. When you throw all of it together, it's sort of a, sometimes a bird just poops on your head situation. If that's the case, why don't you replace this particular officer with a bird? They are far cheaper and more expendable. To be fair, it taught me to be more careful. I found myself since stopping at yield signs and even intersections where I have the right of way. Since the citation, I have twice been rear-ended, resulting in one transport to the hospital and an ambulance that involved x-rays and a CT scan of my neck. The pain has gotten to the point where I needed to place an ADA request to unit on the lower floor of my building, and I haven't been able to engage in the activities I normally would on the nice days like we've just had. I'm not saying the city has any liability here, I know they don't. The bottom line is that people are driving extremely aggressively out there. I see more disobeying stop signs in a week than that officer will see in an entire year on the job in Berkeley. I'm sure that the same officer makes stops like I did on and off duty all of the time. I drive more miles per year than most people do in five. There is nothing on my record whatsoever. I see high-speed car chases on I-75 that never make the news, with a bunch of Oakland County Sheriff deputies winding up in the ditch. It never makes the news, I send video of it to every county commissioner with no response. If there's a little wrong in my stop, please understand my very legitimate concern of being hurt. It's like being punished for your form. I take back the bird suggestion, just hire a Russian Olympic judge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Seeing no one else coming to the microphone, Ms. Mitchell, have you received any correspondence to be entered into the record?
Yes, Your Honor, I have. Joel Alford, Berkeley, would like to know if there is a warranty for the road improvements.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
One, approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 39th regular city council meeting on Monday, April 3rd, 2023, and special joint work session on Wednesday, April 5th, 2023. Two, warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1385. Three, ordinance number 0623, matter of considering the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend Article 5 rental property in Chapter 30, Businesses of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances, to update provisions for rental property registrations and inspections. Four, proclamation number P-1023, matter proclaiming May 2023 as Berkeley History Month. Five, proclamation number P-1123, matter proclaiming May 2023 as motorcycle awareness month. Six, proclamation number P-1223, matter proclaiming May 2023 as mental health awareness month. Seven, proclamation number P-1323, matter proclaiming May 2023 as Building Safety Month.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Vilani with support from Councilmember Baker. Any corrections or changes? Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hunnen?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dooley?
Yes.
Dean. Dean.
Yes. The consent agenda has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda.
Recognitions, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
I've asked Councilmember Baker to read proclamation number P-1023, matter of proclaiming May 2023 as Berkeley History Month.
Thank you, Your Honor, especially as we celebrate the 100th anniversary of Berkeley as a village. It's my particular pleasure to read this proclamation tonight. A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, proclaiming May 2023 as Berkeley History Month. Whereas, in 1819, the first settlers arrived in what is now Oakland County. And in 1825, a four-day steamboat journey service between Detroit and Buffalo enabled many settlers to shorten their journey west as they made their way from New York and New Jersey. Travelers were greeted at the Red Tavern owned by Mother Handsome at Woodward and Columbia Road. John Benjamin made his famous journey from New York and purchased 180 acres, or, sorry, 80 acres of land and built a barn on the site where Roseland Cemetery is today. And whereas, the settlers continued arriving, building their farms and raising their families. The first school was built in what is now Berkeley in the late 1830s. The first phone line was strung for 10 homes along 11 Mile between Berkeley and Royal Oak. In 1919, a town pump was built and electric lighting arrived. In 1923, as noted, Berkeley became a village, and in 1926, the first Berkeley Days Festival was held. And whereas, on May 23rd, 1932, during the Great Depression, and with just under 6,000 residents, the Village of Berkeley became a city with a mayor, six commissioners, a city clerk, treasurer, assessor, judge, and constable. And whereas, since its early days, Berkeley has flourished into a city of approximately 15,000 residents, six incredible schools, nine parks, a public library designated as hip by the Detroit Free Press, over 6,000 homes, and a unique downtown district. And whereas, the Berkeley Historical Committee works tirelessly to compile information and artifacts from around the city in order to preserve our community's history and to allow for it to be treasured by all for years to come. Now, therefore, the Council of the City of Berkeley hereby proclaims, Section 1, that the month of May 2023 shall be recognized as Berkeley History Month in the city of Berkeley. And Section 2, the city council urges those familiar with stories and legends of the early days in Berkeley to share their accounts and photos with the historical committee, and further encourages every citizen to become acquainted with the city's rich and interesting history. Proclaim this 17th day of April, 2023, at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council. Bridgette Dean, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's awesome.
And I've asked Councilmember Patterson to read proclamation number P-1223.
Thank you. A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, proclaiming May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas, mental health is important for our individual well-being and vitality, as well as that of our families, communities, and businesses. And whereas, one in five Americans experience a mental health disorder that requires treatment at some point in their lives. And whereas, one in 10 children has a serious emotional disturbance that if left untreated can lead to failure in school, physical illness, substance use and abuse, entrance into the criminal justice system, and even suicide. And whereas, stigma and stereotypes associated with mental illness often keep people from seeking treatment that could improve their quality of life and potentially save their own life. And whereas, mental health disorders are biologically based brain disorders that cannot be overcome through willpower, and it is not related to a defect in person's character or intelligence. And whereas, mental health recovery is a journey of healing and transformation, enabling people with a mental illness to live within a community of their choice while striving to achieve their full potential. And whereas, mental health recovery not only benefits individuals with mental health disorders by focusing on their abilities to live, work, learn, and fully participate in our society, but also enriches the culture of our community life. And whereas, the COVID-19 pandemic has exacerbated rising mental health issues worldwide, and increasing research has indicated that survivors of COVID-19 infections have higher rates of developing a mental health disorder. And whereas, the Oakland County Health, Oakland Community Health and its service providers, agencies are committed to inspiring hope, empowering people, and strengthening communities. Now, therefore, the Council of the City of Berkeley hereby proclaims, Section 1, that the month of May 2023 shall be recognized as Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Berkeley. Section 2, the city council calls upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the city of Berkeley to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health disorders and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health disorders to promote the recovery and healing. Proclaim the 17th day of April, 2023, at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council. Bridgette Dean, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number two on tonight's agenda?
Presentation, matter of receiving an introduction from 44th District Court Judge Andrew Kolokowski.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for having me. My name is Andrew Kolokowski. I've been recently appointed to the 44th District Court to serve as a District Court Judge. I'll be starting there next Monday, the 24th. Be sworn in the afternoon of the 21st, this Friday. Just to tell you a little bit about myself, I've been a resident of Royal Oak since 2006. I have two children that go to the public schools there, a middle schooler and an elementary schooler. My wife, Jennifer, is a psychologist who works for Corwell Health. I moved to, like I said, Royal Oak in 2006, became a lawyer in 2007, was in private practice for about 12 years. I think I told, Your Honor, that I'd been to basically every district court in the state of Michigan during that time. And then in 2019, I took a job with the Michigan Department of State. I've been serving as a hearing officer for the Michigan Department of State since that time. Sought this position, and I'm thrilled to have the opportunity to serve the citizens of Royal Oak and Berkeley. I've been introduced to the court staff there. Judge Minicki has been doing a really good job of introducing me to the court. I'm aware of the court's reputation. As a practicing attorney, it was always a court that I looked forward to working at. I know that I am following the legacy of an immensely popular judge in Judge Wittenberg, who was popular not only in the legal community, among prosecutors, city attorneys, defense attorneys, but also in the community as a community leader. I think that he had the approach that I aspire to, and I hope that that played a part in the reason the governor chose me to take this seat at this point. So thank you again, I wanted to introduce myself to everybody, and if there's any questions or comments at this time?
Well, I'd like to thank you for being here with us this evening. Is there anyone in, who's joined us this evening who has a comment or anything before I toss this over to council? Okay, discussion from council. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, just a note of appreciation and gratitude for your time coming out to say hello to us and for reaching out to us ahead of time. I appreciate your, the professionalism that you bring to the bench, and I know we look forward to working with you and then helping to ensure that our communities remain, you know, become even more safe and prosperous over time, so, so thank you, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Councilmember Vilani?
Well, welcome, thank you for serving. As you know, you have very big shoes in a role that you're stepping into, but looking forward to see what you do to also make that your own.
Thank you.
And I would like to thank you again for the time that we spent on the phone together. We had a great conversation, and I am confident that you will fill the role, you'll make it your own, but I think you will also continue some of Jamie's legacy. And philosophically, I was here, you know, when we were talking, I was just, yes, yes. And I, I'm just, I feel like we have a good person in that role, and I'm grateful for that. And I look forward to continuing this journey and having you join our coordinated community response team that functions out of the Berkeley Royal Oak Court. So welcome aboard, and thanks for being here tonight and introducing yourself.
Thank you very much, thank you for having me.
You're welcome.
Take care.
You too. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number three on tonight's agenda.
Presentation, matter of receiving a presentation from DTE's governmental relations representative.
Welcome.
Good evening, Your Honor, Mayor Dean, Council. My name is Jennifer Whitaker. I am your DTE Government Affairs Representative for Oakland County. This evening, I've brought some colleagues with me. Rashad Hafiz, who is a supervising engineer for this region. Jamal Robertson, who works with me in Government Affairs, he's our Associate Regional Manager. And Danielle Browning, who is one of our strategists in our tree trimming group. Thanks for having me today, I appreciate it. First off, I want to offer our apologies for our response in this latest February ice storm. Our customers do deserve better performance, and we acknowledge that. It's not the experience that we want for our customers, and we know that we need to do better. And so hopefully tonight, after my presentation, you'll see the steps we're taking to do just that. If Matt wouldn't mind scrolling through it for me. Tonight, I want to talk about the recent weather events, both nationally and here in Michigan, our investment plans for the grid, system-wide, and then specifically what we're doing in Berkeley. Over the last 30 years, we've noticed this trend, this increasing trend in severe weather events. You'll see from this chart, the trend line for billion-dollar events throughout the nation. And it's obviously increasing. And here in Michigan, you know, we remark all the time about 50-year events, 100-year events, and we can't really say that anymore because those events are still increasing. In 2017, we did have hurricane-force winds with gusts as high as 68 miles an hour. And then in recent memory, if you'll remember the summer of 2021, when we had an intense period of 12 back-to-back storms with high winds and six tornadoes in Michigan. I will tell you, I lived through that summer, most of us did, and what was very difficult about those back-to-back storms were the crews did not have time to bring the system back to normal. And so it just made it very difficult for everybody. And then, of course, most recently, this February ice storm, which was our largest storm in 50 years that we had to, where we had to restore customers, and it did span from Lake Michigan to Lake Erie again. And then it was followed by the heavy storms and some high winds. And so, again, back-to-back makes it very difficult for us to restore the grid back to normal. And so, and this February ice storm is the worst-case scenario for any utility with overhead equipment. We had been watching the forecasts for quite some time, and the meteorologists eventually decided that Michigan would be the epicenter of this storm. We put together a large team of folks to have public safety teams cover downed wires, put about 1,000 line workers on standby and notice. At the peak of the storm, it caused about 6, I don't even know how to say, .65 inches of ice to go on trees, which really brought down the wires and the branches and trees, I mean, onto our wires. As little as half an inch of ice on one of our wires is like a baby grand piano hanging from electrical lines. The storm caused 650,000 customers to go without power, and more than 12,000 wires came down throughout that event. And so, as soon as it's safe for our crews to go out, we mobilized the largest team we've ever done in the field with more than 4,000 field workers. And they were there to secure downed lines, assess damage, and start the restoration work. Our primary goal is to get everyone's power as back as quickly and safely as possible. Sometimes that means making temporary repairs. And so if it means making a temporary repair to restore a customer sooner, we'll do that, knowing that the crews will come back in successive weeks to restore customer, the system, the grid, back to normal. And sometimes that takes weeks because of the amount of damage that's done, or if more weather comes through. And so the temporary lines are, the temporary fixes are left back up. This graphic shows how we prioritize restoration. So first, we do our, what we need to do to secure any hazards like downed wires. And so you might see some of our personnel standing down, standing next to downed wires to make sure the public doesn't come in contact. And at the same time, we send out field crews to address power outages. And we repair equipment. I'm sorry, I lost my place. We repair lines and equipment for critical infrastructures like hospitals and pump stations. We also focus on getting customers restored as quickly and safely as possible, as I said. So for instance, maybe we restore a substation, and that substation probably serves, you know, 5, 4, 5,000 people, and we'll do that work first. And then we'll work on distribution lines in neighborhoods and subdivisions, and then we'll work on individual outages at customer homes to fix those issues. So I wanted to bring some pictures of what we found, our damage assessors found in Berkeley during the last storm. Of the customers that had an outage, 81% were restored within 72 hours. And then the remaining customers were smaller outages or individual customers who, and the the damage was enough that it took a long time to restore those customers. The next slide shows just a few more pictures of what we found, the damage that we found. You know, it's the big tree that took down the service drop at that home, and some of the hazard tape that our damage assessors put out when we recognize that there's hazardous equipment out in the field. So we know that we do need to make more investments to improve the reliability for Berkeley and elsewhere. And we need to do that also to meet increased demand in the future with electrification coming. Over the last five years, we've invested $5 billion into our grid, but we know we need more. That $5 million does include tree trimming, some preventance maintenance work with the equipment up at the top of the poles, and replacing aging equipment, also building new substations to handle more capacity and more demand. But we have identified four areas where we know that we have to make major investments in order to meet these demands and, and quite frankly, the service that our customers deserve. We need to continue tree trimming. Where we are on cycle with tree trimming, customers have improved reliability of between 16 and 70%. At the end of last year, we had put the grid on cycle, 79% of the grid was on cycle for enhanced tree trimming. And we will be done with putting all of our circuits on this enhanced tree trimming cycle by the year end of 2025. We also need to continue investing- We also need to continue investing and doing preventance, preventative maintenance and hardening our infrastructure. That includes inspection and upgrading of poles, crossarms, braces, braces, wires, and transformers. Where we have already done this preventive maintenance and hardening, customers experienced 34% less outages. And then we also need to add more automated devices on our system. Automation allows us to control the devices from our central, our operations center downtown. And so, for instance, if we have an outage and we have an automated device, our control center will be able to transfer those customers to a different circuit so that they can have more power as crews work on the circuit where there is a equipment failure, whatever caused the outage to begin with. So, we need to invest in more automated devices. Utilities in the South who have been experiencing severe weather, much more than we have, they've done this and it's proven to work for them. So, that's what we're going to do now. And we do need to accelerate rebuilding our grid. And we need to look at locations where bearing lines make sense. We're just like other infrastructure sectors, like roads and bridges and water systems. We are facing, natural gas and electric utilities are facing the same aging infrastructure as, as those sectors. And we're doing what we can as fast as we can, as safely as we can to bring us up to date. These four investments, we believe, will bring our grid to a top quartile reliability utility. And it will take $20 billion over the next 10 years to do that. That's just grid reliability. There are other investments we're making in the clean energy space as well. But this is just about grid reliability. And so, I'd like to drill down to the investments we've made in Berkeley. Just a quick overview, this is a map of where our substations are. There are four substations that serve the city and 10 distribution circuits that serve the city out of those four substations. And you'll see those four substations are shaded differently and they're numbered differently. None of the substations are in the city of Berkeley, but they do serve the city of Berkeley. And so, you know, I mentioned tree trimming and how we need to continue to be on cycle with that. Nearly 70% of the outages that we have are due to falling trees or tree limbs. And that's why it's so important to keep up with this cycle. And sometimes those trees are out of our right of way. So, we can trim to the enhanced specs we have, which is 15 feet on either side of the line. But, you know, a 40-foot tree is going to fall at some point. And so, we do our best, but we, but keeping on this maintenance cycle is really, really important. And so, currently, Berkeley is at 66% on cycle for tree trim. On cycle means trimmed every five years. And so, many of you have noticed that our contract crews, our contract tree trimming crews are in the city right now. We are hoping that, we're planning for them to be done by the end of June. We're hoping it'll be sooner. And then at the end of that trim, 75% of Berkeley will be on cycle. So, that should help with your reliability as well. And then this map I'm going to give to your city manager as soon as I can, so that you can use this in your city communications. The shaded green area is where we will, we will be trimming this year. And then for equipment improvements, actually, last year, we did do upgrades on three circuits that serve the city. Those circuits serve approximately 2,000 people. Those upgrades include installing new poles, crossarms, sectioning devices, and transformers. This year, we will do another three circuits with much of the same type of equipment upgrade. And these upgrades will reduce time during the outages and will reduce the number of outages as well. And so, this is my last slide. We do need to continue to work with local municipalities like you and with our state regulators so that we can continue to make these investments. Our capital engineering teams are reviewing areas where we can put this automated equipment and new substations. And that will minimize large outages and decrease outage duration. Tree trimming and upgrading the infrastructure in most instances produces the same reliability results as undergrounding at five times less the cost. But we have committed to looking at areas where undergrounding makes sense in both cost and reliability benefits. And so, you know, whenever we do large capital projects in any of the municipalities that I work with in Oakland County, we come directly to city staff and leadership and let them know that our plans and the benefits to the community and why we need to do them. Finally, we do recognize the importance of electricity in everyone's lives, at home and at work and at school and our businesses. Our goal has always been to keep the power on and our recent performance has just been unacceptable. We know that the future includes more electrification and clean energy and these four strategies are a part of meeting those needs. We look forward to working with you and other local and state stakeholders as we build a reliable grid that includes economy-wide decarbonization and meets the needs of our Michigan customers. That's what I have this evening.
Well, thank you, Ms. Whitaker, for that report. I'm going to open this up to public comments. Is anyone here ready with a question, comment? Okay, well, I'm going to turn it over to council then for discussion. Councilmember Vellani.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker, for that presentation and the information that's helpful to hear the investments that DTE is making in the community. As you know, we are a city with a lot of trees. And those trees do pose some issues. And I will say, as a homeowner with a tree that is entangled with lines, my personal experience working through the process with DTE did not go as we thought it would have. So, I think it might be helpful both for myself and anyone listening, for those who have those troublesome trees near power lines that, you know, could take down the neighborhood in the next storm. What is the process for contacting DTE, expectations, timelines, so that everyone's kind of working from the same set of information?
I'm going to attempt to answer that. I'm going to ask Danielle to check me if I don't get it right. So, what we normally do is we plan for a substation area to be trimmed. That's the most efficient way for us to do it. And we have our burst and planners go and look at the condition of the trees and how close they are to our lines. If we determine that a tree needs to be removed, we contact the homeowner. If we determine that trimming needs to be done in the backyard, we leave door hangers with the crew leader's name and phone number so you can contact them directly if you have issues. We never remove a tree without a customer's consent, without a signed signature. And then our enhanced tree trimming guidelines say that we trim 15 feet from the wire and we take as much overhang as we can. The, the trees that interfere with your service drop, the one, the line that comes from the pole to the home, is the property owner's responsibility. So, we will manage the trees that are in the backyards on the primary wire, but the service drop is with the customer.
So, for the trees that fall within that 15-foot range of the main lines and not the service drop, if someone were to call, what would the expectation be for getting that addressed? Is there a timeline? Because I know you said you have a process.
Right. So, if it's outside of where we're planning to trim, they can certainly call. Or there's a form on, online that they can fill out, a tree trim inquiry, to address some of the concerns if they think it's a hazardous situation. Certainly, if you have a resident in Berkeley that feels that way, I can work with Matt to figure out how best to get somebody out there to take a look. In my personal experience, there are some weed trees that grow right underneath and they're hitting cable lines, but not our lines. And so, we won't, we won't trim at the cable line. And so, sometime, I, I don't expect folks to know what's, what the difference is. And so, sometimes, that's what it is.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Looks like no one else, so I'm going to go. I have heard this from residents and I don't know if this was part of what we gave to you. I appreciate you asking ahead of time for concerns and questions, but I did hear from some people that DTE came to their door, like, hey, we're going to fix this. And they're like, no, we have power. Like, it seemed like there was a disconnect or a delay, or maybe the system hadn't caught up. So, there seemed to be a little bit of confusion. Is that something that you were aware of or knowing that that, that's been happening?
So, we're working on it, right?
Okay.
So, many, many of you know that we've changed the outage map. We benchmarked with other utilities around the US and found out that your two Michigan utilities are the only ones that were using the polygon shapes that we had all become accustomed to. What you're seeing now is what most utilities use. And so, we, for many years, were making sure that we were getting ready for implementation, implementation of this new software. We implemented the last week of January, thinking we had four months' time to learn the system and figure out the bugs and figure out, you know, the feedback from customers, not knowing that we would get one of the worst storms that we've ever faced only two weeks later. So, I hear the frustration. I was frustrated, right? I've been working at this company for a very, very long time and I, I wanted the information at my fingertips really, really fast. And it, it was the silver lining. Again, I can only speak for myself, but for the silver lining for me was I learned the new system rather quickly. And we've heard a lot of that feedback, that the map doesn't show what the customers needed to show. And so, we have a full force work stream working on those issues right now. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Ms. Whitaker. Appreciate you coming tonight. So, just a quick question. So, I think everyone probably agrees with electrification coming, that grid modernization is, you know, is very important. So, I know you indicated that there's been $5 billion spent in upgrades over the last five to six years. Yet reliability still seems to have been an issue over the course of those five to six years, in part because of these high-powered storms. So, I guess what I'm wondering is how that $20 billion that's slated to be spent and invested, take into account these higher intensity storms, which frankly are not going away.
They're not, that's what we're presuming too, that they're not going away. I, I'm not part of that capital engineering team, so I'm not, I can't speak with detail. But these are the types of capital projects and plans that we work with, with our regulators to let them see, here is the expected demand based on what we know today, and here is what we need to do to increase that command, increase that capacity on the system to meet that demand. And so, working with the regulators will figure out what's the right formula for us. I will tell you, we have to balance all this out with affordability, right? So, we can't do it all at once, number one. We don't have the people to do it all at once. But even if we did, we still have to be mindful of what people can afford.
Sure. Thank you.
Well, thank you again for coming and thanks for bringing your team. I just want everybody resident-wise to know that we are in regular communication with you. So, if people have further concerns or if they couldn't be at the meeting tonight and want to shoot City Manager Baumgarten an email.
Sorry, Matt.
Yeah. He'll make sure that you get that and that, that we'll get back to the resident as well or residents. So, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Anytime. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Motion Number M-2323, matter of approving continuing partnership with ERC, Energy Reduction Coalition, to provide and install LED lights at all baseball fields and tennis courts throughout the city.
Is there a motion to approve M-2323? Support. Motion made by Councilmember Julie with support from Mayor Pro Tem Gavin. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you very much and good evening, members of council, Madam Mayor. We have been working with ERC on LED conversions now, and we would like the opportunity to expand this project, but want to come to council because this particular agreement has a long lead time and includes some capital upgrades as well. As you know, we've been heading our capital, our equipment replacement plan for quite a while to replace ballfield lighting across our baseball and softball fields. We have an opportunity, working with ERC, to enter into an agreement that will allow us to get this done with very little upfront capital, with a very long-term payback at very little interest. So, we thought, as we discussed this with Mr. Brown, it seemed to be a good idea and worth coming to council for your consideration on this. Mr. Brown is joined by Jim Lamoreto. Lamoreto from ERC to answer any technical questions you may have.
Great. Mr. Brown, anything you'd like to add?
Well, Matt kind of stole all my points, but that's good. I guess I wrote a good memo. Though, as you mentioned, this is a project we've already kind of started and worked on at the community center and here at City Hall. And just with these small conversions, we're already saving about 70% on our electric bill, just for these two buildings. Moving forward with the ballfield lighting, we'll be saving similar to that, long-term. As Matt mentioned, there are some upfront costs that ERC is going to front for us and give us a interest-free loan, basically for 30 years to pay off what we owe them back for the upfront costs. Upon approval tonight, they'll be able to start this project with the next 10 to 12 days. It'll take about a month to convert all the baseball fields. We're anticipating by the time with lead time of product, we should be done by the first or second week of June. So, we'll have some late baseball season available. We'll still be able to have the, the nice new lights at all the fields. This will include all baseball fields in the city and the three or four tennis courts that haven't been converted yet. And as Matt said, Jim from ERC is here too. He'd like to say a few things and answer any other technical kind of questions you have that maybe I can't.
Good evening. My name is Jim Lamoreto. I work with Energy Reduction Coalition and quite a bit with DTE. We've been in business for about 12 years. We have done over 60 organizations, converted their lights to LED lights. Of those organizations, over half have been municipalities. The total projects that we've done to date total over $22 million. And a lot of the cities that we've done are the neighboring cities here. But more importantly, the fields that we have done, we have converted the lights at, for fields in Shelby Township, Rochester Center Line, Village of Reese, Mackinac City, and outstate the Wembley Tennis Club. As Alex has said, you know, the, we've, we're able to reduce your lighting electrical usage by 69% in the City Hall and the community center. And the fields are projected to be the same 69% savings. But when it comes to the fields, they're used a lot less frequently than the city lights are, the building lights. And they're a lot more expensive than the building lights are. And they, and to get the electricians up there at 60, 70 feet up in the air to do it is a lot more expensive. So, as a result, we're, we try to get the savings to, to cover the cost that just isn't possible with the field. So, what we, what we tried to do, or what we're, our proposal includes, is that we looked at, based on today's energy rates, the cost of converting the fields lights is going to be $128,000 more than what the 30-year savings would be from, due to the conversion. So, what we, our organization, we said, well, we'll chip in $4,500 towards that to knock it down to $123.5, and then we'd give a 30-year interest-free loan to do that. So, that is, does mean that, you know, the city's cost will be going up. However, if the rates, that, the, the energy rates that you pay for, if they increase by just 2.7% a year, that, the savings that'll, that will be generated by the reduced usage of those lights will pay for that entire cost. To the extent that rate's going to go up more than 2.7%, you're going to see a savings right away. But I say, so, right now, there, there could be some incremental cost, but then, over the years, it should turn itself around and be a budget saver for the city. I guess that, that's all I need to add. So, is there questions or?
Councilmember Henan.
From a, just curious, from a business perspective, how are you able to offer us a 0% interest loan?
We structure ourselves kind of as a nonprofit. And we have, there's, we have three sources of revenue that we get to cover these type of projects. One is bank funding. One is from different organizations that contribute to our organization that, to allow us to do these type of projects. And the third one is from the amounts that, the revenue that we get from the cities themselves that we're in putting the lights into. So I say, all we, the only thing that we really build into ours is the, it's like a 2% overhead charge. And everything else is, it's just, it's from the combination of those three sources.
Thank you.
I just had one question. Just knowing the lights currently there, and how they need to be replaced, I do see that there's a warranty offered as long as we stay within the program. What is the life expectancy of the new lights? Will they still have to be replaced yearly, or do they last longer than what's there currently?
The lights that we saw, because we also provide a labor reimbursement, we get the best quality lights that we can find. And best quality does not mean cheapest, you know? So I tell people, and it's no respect, disrespect to Home Depot or net, but you won't find our lights in a Home Depot. Because, you know, they're trying to get the best, you know, the most, the cheapest lights out so people can convert. Because we're on the hook for the labor reimbursement, which if in fact the city does their own replacement lights, we cut the city a check. So we look for the best lights. So we estimate, even though the lights still only will have a five-year warranty from the manufacturer, we're estimating that those lights will last somewhere between 10 and 15 years. So if they last shorter than that, then, you know, it's going to cost us a little bit more. If they last longer than that, then there'll be a little bit better benefit.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick question. So you indicated that the 2.7%, if they're increasing energy costs, then it becomes sort of a savings at that point. Can you give a ballpark of how much energy rates have increased in maybe the last 10 years?
It's been a little bit higher than that.
Is it more? That's what I'm curious about.
And, but I will say, DTE does do a good job. But with all the, like, as she showed you, to keep the infrastructure going isn't cheap, and it's getting more expensive. And the new sources of energy that they're using to generate the electricity is also a little bit more expensive, but definitely beneficial for the environment. You know, it is definitely needed. But, so, I think 2.7% increase is probably going to be on the very low end of that.
Yeah, and I, and partly I ask just because I want to gauge the potential of what we've seen in the past, and how, over the course of 30 years, this will be a net savings for the city. Thank you.
Just like I said, I don't, because we don't have any of the history yet with Berkeley, but I was just, last week, I was with the City of Hamtramck, and went through with them, and showed them what their increases, you know, the increased rates have been to them, and how much more that they have been able to save. Generally, when we do a proposal, we assume zero. We assume that nothing's going to increase over the next 30 years, to try to give a worst-case scenario. Is, you know, we're guaranteeing that you're going to show, that these numbers are going to happen. And if we fall short of that, it comes out of what we get, we get paid, not what the city is benefiting. So we're assuming that it's going to be zero. Realistically, that's not going to be the case. So to the extent, whenever that does go up, then that just increases the benefit for the city.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Well, thank you so much for coming and telling us all the benefits to this program. Is there anybody in here with us tonight that has a question or comment? No? Okay, just want to make sure we cover all our bases. Thank you both very much. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M-2323.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number five on tonight's agenda.
Motion Number M-2423, matter of approving appointments to boards and commissions.
Is there a motion to approve M-2423?
Still moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Patterson. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've got a couple of individuals here volunteering to spend their time with the historical committee, as well as the environmental advisory committee. You have two potential appointments for the historical committee. Dorothy Benau, with an appointment expiring July 1, 2025. And then Stephen Patterson, with an appointment also expiring July 1, 2025. On the environmental advisory committee, Mr. Donald Kaler, with an appointment to a partial term expiring July 1, 2024. Each of these applicants that you have in your packet have been reviewed by the chair, as well as the council liaison, and come with a recommendation for all.
Thank you. Any discussion from council?
I'll just say one thing. It seems like the Pattersons are taking over. There is no relation. There is no relation, but he does look like an ideal candidate. More than just his last name. Catchy name.
Anyone else? Are any of the applicants here? I'm thinking not. I know one of them. No. Okay.
Madam Mayor? Yeah, to that very Patterson point there. Very particular Patterson point. Please come to the museum. I'll give a little plug for it later on. You can see some of the handiwork that Stephen has already donated and contributed to the exhibits and displays within there. His wife Rachel is not only a very active member in the, in the committee, she's also our deputy clerk. So there's a, there's a little bit of that Patterson inside angle there going on for sure, but it's all good. And we have, the committee has already greatly benefited from his and other applicants' contributions to, to the committee. So I'm very eager to support this tonight.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M-2423.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. M-2423 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number six on tonight's agenda.
Ordinance Number O-723, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to add Article 17 Retail Dog and Cat Sales Temporary Moratorium in Chapter 30 Businesses of the Berkeley City Code, to establish a temporary moratorium on new businesses or expansion of existing businesses that engage in the retail sale of dogs or cats.
Is there a motion to approve O-0723? Still moved?
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Vilani, with support from Councilmember Henan. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This ordinance runs on a parallel track to the one that council heard a first reading on previously. But while that work is ongoing between council members, as well as the city attorney, there is still the possibility that a new location could open, or an existing location could expand. Under this first reading, they would, they would be prohibited from doing so for a finite period of time, while the council works on the other previously discussed ordinance. So it was crafted primarily by the city attorney, and by primarily, I mean 100% by the city attorney. So it does come with his review, and I believe, recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Sterren, is there anything you'd like to add?
I think Mr. Baumgarten covered it pretty well. It is, it's kind of a stopgap measure. It is a temporary moratorium, separate from the, and not, not, not a substitute for, but I think you said, parallel track with the earlier one. Just to, while, while we're looking at a more comprehensive, more permanent approach, just to protect against any further stores from opening, or any existing store from expanding. So as drafted, I put in six months is the duration of the moratorium. Six months is about as far as courts and case law seem to be comfortable with, but that, that's the maximum. It could be less. It could be, you know, whatever council chooses to do. But that's the purpose. It's pretty, pretty straightforward, and it's intended to be temporary, with the idea that in the near future, we'll be coming back with council deliberating over something more permanent.
Okay, thank you. Any public input?
Hello, good evening. I am Lauren Delega, live in Franklin, Michigan. I am a policy leader, volunteer with HSUS, and then an active member of the rescue community. Just first wanted to say, thank the council, you know, for taking this first step in passing the ordinance of banning puppy sales in pet stores. Although it's just the first step, it's obviously a very important one. I know there's been a lot of time and thought and effort that's gone into all of this, a lot of considerations. So thank you guys for spending so much time on this. I did just want to say, and, you know, ask, that you please move forward quickly with passing a full ban on pet stores selling puppies. The residents of Berkeley agree that even just one store is too many in the city. The more time that passes, the longer the cycle of abuse in puppy mills will continue for the sake of profit. Rescues like mine are beyond overwhelmed with the number of dogs that are being surrendered for, from puppy mills. Us alone, we've taken in 17 dogs in the last just three days. The requests keep coming. These are specifically from breeders or puppy mills in surrounding states. Many times, they are puppies. They're 12 to 15 weeks old. And this is because, once they're past eight, nine weeks, they're not as desirable in pet stores, they're not as desirable from breeder selling them, so they don't seem to make as much money off them. And they end up just dumping them on overwhelmed shelters, city shelters, and, and rescues. So, you know, the quicker this can get done, the better it is for all of us. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, council. Thank you so much for having us. And again, like Lauren said, taking the time each time to listen to us, it really does mean a lot. I'm Tiffany Perkins. I live in Royal Oak, Michigan, and I'm the founder of a local nonprofit for disabled dogs. So my concern today, I want to share with you regarding the local retail stores housing puppies inside of glass display boxes, and their specifically selling of Merle Bulldogs. In every disability case that I've taken on, the dog has been confined to a small space. Retail stores house puppies in tiny glass display boxes during their most, their most formative weeks, while muscles and spines are still developing. Speckled Merle Bulldogs are notorious for congenital birth defects. Puppy brokers and stores do not calculate mortality rates, and many of these Merles are disposed of before they can be shipped for purchase. From their online photos of their Merle Bulldogs, specks and velvet, you can clearly see their underdeveloped shoulders, which will produce a painful bowed posture. What you can't see is that most commonly, their respiratory system will take their life, and they won't get to live a full life. Ethical breeders very vocally cite that Merle Bulldogs are actually out of breed standard. The kennel club doesn't recognize it as a standard breed and coat, and they're a short-sighted science experiment with severe consequences. Having one myself, so I'm very passionate about this cause. My vet partner, Dr. John Meskenna, and scientists at Wisdom Panel have conducted a case study on my bulldog puppy, whose Merle, his name is Blueberry. They confirmed that Blueberry will have a short, complicated life because of his Merle coloring. And I just want to say that puppy stores can curate exaggerating talking points against proof that their inventory is sourced from puppy mill brokers, conveniently without providing vet records, adoption metrics, to disprove our findings, or mortality records. But they cannot deny their contributions to undocumented mortality rates, future mobility of, future mobility disablement, and hefty specialty vet bills for local families that are purchasing these dogs, unknowingly that they have problems internally and externally. My nonprofit does not seek medical assuredness from investors or franchise owners. We work closely with local doctors and veterinary physical therapists, and I would encourage you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm freezing, so I'm going to leave my coat on. My name's Alexis Hilton. I'm a resident of Berkeley, and today I come to you with information regarding our shelters. Per the ASPCA website, 6.3 million animals enter the shelter annually. Of that 6.3 million, about 810,000 animals are returned home. That's 7.7% of dogs that are in the shelter that are returned back home. If we look at the records posted on Michigan.gov for 2021's shelter reports, you'll find that these numbers closely align to our shelters here in Michigan. For example, Detroit Dog Rescue returned 2.6% of dogs to owners out of 311 dogs. Detroit Animal Control, 16.9% out of 3,608 dogs. Genesee County Animal Control, 26.8% out of 1,762 dogs. Human Society of Genesee County, 7.1% of 543 dogs. I Heart Dogs, 3.6% out of 699 dogs. Oakland County, 34.1% of 1,728. Rochester Health Center for Animal Care, .4% of 1,647. Of these seven Michigan shelters I've listed, that leaves 8,597 dogs displaced in our shelter system for the year. If the return rates of these businesses are anywhere near the intake we see in shelters and rescues, will these businesses take the responsibility of the thousands of dogs that they are supplying into an already oversaturated market every year? Royal Oak is one of the few cities less far to make a leap onboard with making a difference for these dogs by banning the retail sale of dogs. Their shelter had a release rate back to their owner of 86.2%, one of the highest percentages found in Michigan. With this concern becoming statewide, I would like to see Berkeley as one of the frontrunners in doing what is right and leading by example. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else before I turn this over to council? Sure.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city manager. First of all, I think you guys are doing a great job by doing the research, because I think it's important. You guys are doing the research, and as a business owner who, who made a large investment into the community, because we want to be a community partner, we appreciate the fact that you're going the extra mile. I mean, if it's a state issue, it may be a state issue. You know, we hope to be involved here locally, and you'll see how we partner with local municipalities to make it a better place. There is some misconceptions about what we do, a lot of misconceptions. And I'm, I'm not going to stack the audience with people, or your residents, frankly. And believe me, I've got my list of residents that support us and support what we're doing. And we've placed several dogs with residents here in the City of Berkeley. But the puppies, you know, it's not, they come at eight weeks old. That's, that's a law. Before they come even two here, they go into a holding facility, which is a brand-new facility built last year, a million-dollar facility. Beautiful facility, okay? They're under 72 hours of vet care before they get transported. After they get transported, they come here, then they go, and they get vet-checked down there. Within the next 24 hours, they're vet-checked here by a state-of-Michigan licensed veterinarian. So the dogs are checked by two different veterinarians within 24-hour period. They're fed natural pet food, both wet and dry. They're monitored, they're fed separately. The habitats that were designed by veterinarians, you know, are so they can see, there's no bars, there's no, no thing. So it wouldn't matter if it's, they can call it a glass house, but let me tell you, those puppies get played with on a consistent basis throughout the day. And you're welcome to come anytime and see, okay? At, at feeding time, which is usually at about 11 o'clock, and at 5 o'clock, they're put up, we separate them and, and fed individual amounts, so we can monitor their calorie intake, so we can make sure that they're getting appropriate food. Because what we're trying to do, we're not trying to make a puppy look fat and unhealthy. People think that. It's, we're trying to make the conversion into a family pet, to where we can tell them when the puppy's going to use a restroom, when, you know, what kind of...
About 15 seconds.
So I resent one thing about my Bulldogs, my kids' Bulldogs, you're lucky my 10-year-old's not here, because our blue Merle Bulldogs are mine personally. They live with me. They're in the store. They live with me, they're in the store, and I love them. And I take that a little personal when you talk about my dogs.
Any further comment from those of you assembled here? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment portion of this and turn it over to council. Any discussion from council? Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on O-0723?
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dooley?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The ordinance has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number seven on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-2523, matter of approving an inter-local agreement with Oakland County.
Is there a motion to approve M-2523?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Gavin with support from council member Baker. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, bringing it up here. This is inter-local agreement with Oakland County. As you remember, we, the city was fortunate enough to be selected for a critical infrastructure planning grant, which would cover mainly our verifications for our lead service line program. Remember back at the previous council meeting, we actually had the monies allocated, and we had HRC actually is going to serve as our ender for this. Now it's come time to begin the reimbursement process. Oakland County did point out that they need a specific reimbursement policy for this particular program, in addition to the other reimbursements we get. So this merely is catching up to that point and allowing us to be reimbursed on the critical infrastructure planning grant that we won for the city. The two exhibits, if you notice, the inter-local agreements, the last two pages, exhibit A and exhibit B, are both blank. Those are the additional items, the one for the water, for the drinking lines, and then the lead service lines. Those will be integrated into the document as exhibit A and B, but wanted to include them. Those were the applications that we made directly to the county, so they're in there for your review as well.
Thank you. Any discussion from council? Okay.
Anytime we get reimbursed is a good thing.
Right. Yeah, it's a good thing. Okay, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M-2523?
Baker?
Yes.
Dooley?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number eight on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-2623, matter of appointing Public Works Director Sean Young as the city of Berkeley's representative, and Assistant Director of Public Works, Robert Chalmers, as the alternate representative to the Southeastern Oakland County Resource Recovery Authority SACRA Board of Trustees for the remainder of the fiscal year ending on June 30, 2023, and instruct the city clerk to send a copy of this motion to the SACRA board.
Is there a motion to approve M-2623?
So moved.
Motion made by council member Patterson with support from council member Vilani. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you. This is the first of two related items, one for SACRA, one for SACWA, one being the Refuge and Recycling Authority, the other one being the Water Authority. For both, Mr. Young has been our primary representative for both. Mr. Pollak was his backup, and then, so now we're putting Robert, Rick Chalmers, in to back him up. The meetings typically are held on the second Wednesday of each month. It's in conflict with the DDA, or else I would be serving as the backup, but I'm not able to make them as often as I would like, so Rick has kindly been voluntold that he is going to be the backup to this. But Sean Young has yet to miss a meeting and probably never will. He's that dynamite man.
Okay, thank you. Discussion from council.
It's great to have a voice at the table, huh?
Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M-2623.
Dooley?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Motion M-2623 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number nine on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-2723, matter of appointing Public Works Director Sean Young as the city of Berkeley's representative and Assistant Director of Public Works, Robert Chalmers, as the alternate representative to the Southeastern Oakland County Water Authority SACWA Board of Trustees for the remainder of the fiscal year ending on June 30, 2023, and instruct the city clerk to send a copy of this motion to the SACWA board.
Is there a motion to approve M-2723?
So moved.
Council member Dooley with support from council member Patterson. Mr. Baumgarten.
Madam Mayor, same explanation as the previous item.
Okay. Discussion.
What do you think, folks?
Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M-2723.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dooley?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. M-2723 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number 10 on tonight's agenda.
Resolution number R-923, matter of authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing to be held May 15, 2023, regarding the proposed operating budget for the city of Berkeley, Michigan for fiscal year 2023-2024.
Is there a motion to approve R-0923?
So moved.
Motion made by council member Baker?
Support.
With support from Mayor Pro Tem Gavin. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our city charter requires that the city's budget be approved by the third meeting, third Monday in May. That year, this does fall on May 15. That's where you'll be conducting the public hearing noted in here. So, as is our way, we usually set this in the meeting prior. In between now and that public hearing, the city will have the opportunity to come here and join the city council and going through the budget line by line, as far as what staff has put together for your review and consideration. Not only will we be going through rates and revenues, but we'll also be discussing your, there's for budget, there's capital improvements plan, there is the water rates, there's sanitary rates, as well as the millage rates as well. So this is specific to our millage rates, but anybody who does want to attend the May 15 meeting, there's quite a bit of information presented there.
Thank you. Discussion from council. Yes, council member Baker?
Thank you. This is the way. No, it's, budget's one of the most important things we can do as council, and, because the budget reflects our values and our priorities. So where we put our money is where we look to see progress and advancement. So I certainly would encourage everybody out there to take a look at the budget and attend if you're able. Bring a lot of coffee, because the binder is like this thick, but it's good. It's important work, it's necessary work, and I'm really happy to be a part of it. I think, so my question is, we have a millage between now and then, so I believe we're preparing a scenario A and a scenario B as part of this conversation. Can you share a little bit more about, you know, our preparation if we were to be able to continue to build upon and enhance the services, as opposed to the scenario where we need to take cuts and do less for our residents in those scenarios?
Certainly. So, as in the course of my usual project or process, our department directors have come through and said, hey, as the expert in my field, here's what I believe it's going to take to run my department for the next 12 months. And so as we went through there, had them sort of prioritize items and look for items that perhaps would be unfortunate but would have to be cut should the need arises. Then we sit there and we compare that to the revenue picture, and this year, as we had the last couple of years, did have to make those cuts, so those were tracked, and we have those to present back to you as the council member in the form of a budget amendment should voters decide to approve the updated millage rates on May 2nd. So we do, that's kind of how the process will take place. The budget that'll be delivered to you at the end of this month will be in balance with the revenues that we know of, but with some potential asks for inclusion should the revenue picture change between now and then.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else from council?
I think council member Baker said it all.
He sure did. Public input. That's a very important thing. Okay. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on R-0923?
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dooley?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. R-0923 has passed. Okay, communications. Ms. Mitchell, who goes first?
Council member Patterson.
Thank you. The Planning Commission hasn't met since our last meeting. We will meet on April 25 at 7:00 PM. That is their next scheduled meeting. And I just want to extend a warm welcome to our newest members of a committee. Having served on committees and boards, it is very important, and a lot of their work goes unnoticed, so I thank those willing to step up. The Planning Commission does have openings. If anybody is interested, please reach out. You can apply online, or if you have any questions, you can talk to anybody on Planning, or you can talk to me, because I was on there recently. So, thank you to anybody who wants to serve for all of our citizens.
Council member Henan?
Yeah, for the Tree Board, the annual Arbor Day planting will be Saturday, April 29 at 9:00 AM, and that's going to be at Cass Boulevard near 11 Mile. And their next meeting is on Monday, April 24. Then the Zoning Board of Appeals met, and just a classic case of what variances are meant for, approved an addition onto a home on one of our unique triangular lots where Kipling, Wakefield, and Morrison meet, and they are not going to have a May meeting. That's all.
Thank you. Council member Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor, and I certainly hope that you have a quick recovery from your bronchitis. Happy Volunteer Appreciation Week, everybody. Our Downtown Development Authority Board met Wednesday, April 12. They discussed updates to the mural program and the facade grant program in terms of the amount of funding that would be provided and the criteria upon which that funding would be released to the businesses looking to beautify their establishment and thereby enhancing our downtown. Four new murals resulted from that conversation, and we'll be working their way through our community here in the next few months, which is exciting. They continued the discussion about the Coolidge Complete Streets Initiative, and in particular, there was extensive dialogue about the reopening of the two existing crosswalks, activating the signals and continuing to make it more safe as we look to do some infrastructure work in the weeks and months ahead. The next Ladies Night Out is on May the 4th, so in the spirit of "May the 4th be with you," they've named it Leia's Night Out. So, but that's an opportunity for folks to come out and enjoy extended hour, opening hours for our businesses in our downtown and have a great time, so hopefully everybody will make it out for that. And for more information on our Downtown Development Authority and the various projects and programs and events, please visit downtownberkeley.com. And again, I greatly appreciate the honor of having the opportunity to read the Berkeley History Month proclamation. Our Historical Committee met on April 11, and they continue to work on the overall celebration of our 100 years as a village, which is this year, which is great. In the summer and fall months, they will be making available for sale historic plaques that homeowners can choose to purchase that designate the year in which their home was constructed. If they'd like to mount that, you know, on the front of their house, or wherever else they want to have plaque built up, they could certainly do that. The 100th Anniversary Book is coming along really well. This will be a free publication sent to every home within the friendly city of Berkeley. I've read many of the draft articles, they're very well-written and informative. I learned a lot, and I'm looking forward to hearing feedback from other folks on those cool things as well. The Kid Homes Tour has been rescheduled for late September, and more details will be emerging as that comes closer here. And visitors are always welcome to the museum. I mentioned that earlier when we talked about the volunteers joining the committee. The museum is open on Wednesdays from 10:00 until 1:00 in the afternoon, and Sundays from 2:00 until 4:00. And they too have a website, it's berkeleyhistory.com. And finally, in the spirit of Volunteer Week, Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others?" And I'll just echo my colleagues' sentiments, you know, that April is Volunteer Appreciation Month here, and this is our particular week we've designated in the proclamation as being Volunteer Appreciation Week. And so, you know, I've seen hands-on, not only what these two committees do on a regular basis, but I've enjoyed the hard work of the folks on all of the other committees. And folks have volunteered in so many other ways that don't necessarily go through City Hall, you know, whether it's in your neighborhood, you're helping out a neighbor, or if you're with the Dad's Club, or any of the other, you know, the PTA stuff, whatever you do that helps to make your little part of the world better, you're awesome. And so if you've listened before, you know I usually end by saying, please hug somebody you love, because you know that they need it. And I think it's time to pat yourself on the back, so I'm going to change that this time. Pat yourself on the back for doing awesome to help make our city great, so thank you.
Thank you.
And hug somebody you love, please, because they need it.
Pro Tem?
Thank you, Your Honor. For Parks and Recreation, Trivia Tuesday at the Community Center is back on May 16 at 12:30 PM. Sign up for it, it's $10, which includes trivia and lunch, so make sure to check it out. Summer day camp registrations are filling up quickly, so if you'd like to sign up, head to recreation.berkeleymish.org to enroll. And then registration for specialty and sports summer camps are also open at this point. A few tickets do remain for the Family Jam Dance Night on April 28 at 6:00 PM at the Community Center. And the next meeting for Parks and Rec will be on June 8 at 7:00 PM at the Community Center. And then the Environmental Advisory Committee, the next meeting is tomorrow, April 18 at 6:30 on the second floor of the Public Safety Building, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Vilani?
Yes, thank you. There are no updates from the TAC and CEAC Committee, as they have not had any meetings of late. From the Berkeley Area Chamber, this Friday is our Chamber Chat on April 21 at 8:30 AM at Woodward Corners. It's a chance to connect with other local business owners. No need to register, just show up. There is, as has been mentioned, an important vote coming up on May 2 for our Headley Millage Override. Please take the time to educate yourself, there is lots of great information on the website, so really want everyone to check that out, make informed decisions. Our own council member Henan has created a great calculator on there, so you can even look at the cost of this to use, so that you can help inform yourself for that big decision there. In case you're looking for something to do this weekend, the Berkeley Drama Club at Berkeley High School is putting on SpongeBob the Musical. It will be showing at 7:00 PM on April 20, 21, and 22, and then at 3:00 PM on the 23rd. Tickets are $15 for adults, $10 for students, seniors, and Berkeley School District staff. Just in case SpongeBob Enough wasn't to draw you in, it does include music by Steven Tyler and Joe Perry of Aerosmith, Sara Bareilles, Cyndi Lauper, John Legend, T.I., The Plain White Tees, just to name a few, so get your tickets now. And then, lastly, would like to continue to thank our residents who continue to come every week and attend these meetings. I know they are very exciting, so it's a draw in and of itself to be here, but we really appreciate how you continue to advocate for your decisions, share your beliefs with us. You are what helps inform our government, so please continue to do so, because you are why we are here. So thank you for your time, you are appreciated. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Council member Dooley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Library Board has not met since our last meeting, although we do meet this Wednesday, 7:00, and the meeting is open to anybody who'd like to come, so if you want to come see what's new at the library, see the new paint job, come on by at 7:00. Again, I would like to welcome all the new board members and thank all the folks in the city for volunteering their time, and another Patterson. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to say thank you to everyone who was able to come out and participate in our updates and our formal sessions, informational sessions, on the upcoming millage election. We did have four or five of them over the course of four days, and had great turnout every time, not a lot of empty seats, and had really, really good discussions. And as people saw, your, as the attendees questioned, ended up becoming slides for future ones, so they really were a community-sourced presentation, and so I'm very grateful for anyone who took the time out of their evening or the Saturday morning to join us. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Staran?
Just very briefly, if I can harken back to, matter was on the agenda earlier, I had mentioned it to you, Judge Kowalski, before the, Kowalski, I'm sorry, before the meeting started, and I just want to say it out loud, we think he's going to be a fine addition to the court. My office and primarily my partner, Dan Christ, who's the lead prosecutor- My office and primarily my partner, Dan Christ, who's the lead prosecutor for the city, have enjoyed a very strong relationship with the 44th District Court and their personnel and our own Berkeley's finest and our city staff. And we fortunately know Judge Kowalski a little bit. Dan Christ has had a number of dealings with him over the years, although he was on the other side of the bench. So that'll be interesting. But we do very much look forward to establishing and maintaining the same type of strong and effective relationship we've enjoyed already with the current Judge Minicki and late Judge Wittenberg, and we think this is going to be a good addition, good for the court, good for the community.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to take a moment to commend our Public Safety Department. They assisted with what was thought to be an active shooter situation at Great Lakes Crossing, turned out to be a TASER deployment. But the fact that they just are ready, they're prepared, they get the call and they go. And it means a lot to me that we have such dedication in the city of Berkeley. And I know we have this reciprocity with other communities, and it truly speaks to, you know, when you say public safety, it's now sometimes a broader definition of public. So fortunately, nobody was hurt. It wasn't a gunshot, we can all be thankful for that. And it's just an extra layer of safety and community that I think we enjoy, not only in Berkeley but in the surrounding areas. Budget work sessions are happening soon. May 8 is the first night, and the 9th, if we need the 10th, we'll go for it. It is a line-by-line exploration of all the asks in the city and where each dollar goes. What I love about budget work sessions, and I know I just made a little face, but what I do love is that every department puts together their wish list, the things, you see their priorities, because your priorities is, you know, that drives what you're asking for money-wise, and so that's the exciting piece of budget work sessions for me. And we're all in it together, and I look, I want to commend Lori Fielder for the incredible amount of work that she does going into that. It's truly amazing. So thank you, Lori. Berkeley Days is coming up, and we'll be celebrating, as council member Baker mentioned, the 100th anniversary of Berkeley as a village. It's a few days of great fun for families, not families, any, but there's something for everyone to do. So if you are around, May 11 it begins, I believe it's the 11th through the 14th, come and stop by, get a corn dog or an elephant ear, wash it down with a beer, getting a stomach ache already. But there's music, there's a lot of great food. I know Berkeley BBQ will be there among other people, so keep that on your, in your mind or put it on your calendar. And then finally, council leaves most of us tonight to go to Lansing for the Michigan Municipal League Conference, where we are able to network with other elected officials from other communities and bring back best practices, so I look forward to that. We always come back smarter and sharper. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Motion made by council member Valani. Was that a Patterson second?
Support.
Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Hmm, yes.
Dooley?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The Monday, April 17, 2023, meeting of the council in Berkeley is adjourned.